Good evening, area one, it is six thirty. Welcome to the Tuesday, July fifth, two thousand twenty-two, planning commission meeting. Please stand for the question. Lieutenant, two, United States of America. Due to our public, it's one nation. I'm not going to have individual, but every day is justice for all. Mister, could you please call them all?
That's Mister Chairman, Mister Oliver.
Yeah.
Miss Smith.
Here.
Mister Bentley.
Mister Bentley has actually accused us.
Okay, Mister Hardy.
Here.
Mister Chuckfield is present, Mister Spatafora, here. Mister Meyer.
And Mister Meyer really hasn't accused us as well. Okay, we have a forum of five.
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion to excuse Secretary Bentley and member Meyer from this.
Okay.
Call votes.
Now second, well, supported by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Alright. Um, approval of previous meeting minutes. Any discussion?
No discussion, then I'll make the motion to approve the previous board meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Mrs. Smith made the motion, Mister Spatafora seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. Approval of agenda for tonight. Any discussion?
Mister Chairman, if there's no corrections or corrections to the agenda, I'm going to show me.
Okay. Mister Oliver made the motion and Mrs. Smith supported it. All in favor, everyone?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, old business. Mister Box.
There's no old business.
Okay, moving on to new business and public hearings. Let's start with the first one. Res zoning request from residential, one-family urban R one to residential, multi-family low-density R two L, Golden Creek. Earlier parcel, zero eight, one six, two zero zero, zero zero seven. Located on the south side of twenty-four mile, quarter mile west of Foss. Section sixteen, Salvatore, De Merpio. Just Mister Box.
Thank you, Mister Chairman and Commission. Uh, as you mentioned, the property is located on the south side of twenty-four mile. Next to, kind of sandwiched between where future brought and will go with it and, uh, those and fellow property. The property doesn't tend to develop the site as a low-rise multi-family residential development. Uh, single-family residents, if you look on this screen, there's a couple of single-family residents that exist. One on the property and one would be adjacent to the property. Uh, as I mentioned, it is closed, this is the landfill down here. Uh, the property to the south, it's currently zoned agricultural, but it is master plan for residential. The property to the west is currently vacant, uh, but we are working with the developer on that property to be developed as residential, uh, and those two properties are separated by the drain currently. So, the property in question, uh, again, they are seeking, uh, multi-family, uh, low-density, which would be up to six units per acre. Uh, it is master planned for, for the six drilling units an acre. And again, we want to know that it is next to the landfill. Residential property, one of the other properties just north of the landfill here is currently under construction. If you've been down twenty-four mile on the street, you see a lot of that. That is also multi-family, uh, development. Uh, and, and they, that development is currently under construction. Did their best to keep the development away from the landfill as far as possible. And I'll defer to Mister Thompson and Mister Dean and Carrier who are here, but I think that's somewhat of their intent as well, that to, to try to put the units closer to twenty-four mile road to, to keep the residents as far away as possible from the landfill. Um, that being said, uh, it, it is master planned for what they are seeking. Uh, so it does align with the future land use plan, uh, and therefore staff is recommending, uh, approval of this rezoning.
Okay. Mister Box, is this a kind of medium community? Is this what we're looking at?
Uh, it could be developed in a number of ways, that, that's not really determined yet.
Okay, just one. Alright. Mister Thompson, please state your name.
Benjamin Bill Thompson, from Seaver Peace later, address is one seven zero zero one nineteen Melrose Street, three Clinton Town. Uh, this subject, this site was in front of you one year ago. It was subject of a, uh, consent rezoning or condition of rezoning. Ready to sustain that it. The project is that we are contemplating, or is contemplating, is very similar to that. But there's going to be changes made because of changes in the county engineering standards. We do plan, I decided ourselves, at least a little bit of land, um, probably keep a hundred, hundred fifty feet of land from the, with the development. Um, there'll be, there's a gas means that's true. Right above, over the subject site is, and they're across, about a forty-five degree angle. Uh, so the retention pilots will, in the north end, the south end. Standing very soon, actually once along the stationary boundary. Uh, we have to carry it to our rest property line. Uh, we will carry it to the bank of the drain, further near the bank of the drain and set money aside for a car after the crossing. And then, uh, the next door neighbors, they have to be his staff, carry across the drain. Waterway exists on the north side, went from Melrose. Uh, we'll have to connect to that twice, uh, to create a circuit unless we can connect to somebody else. Other than that, that's what the proposal is going to be. And so the site is my plan for this use.
Okay. Commission, questions, comments?
Hey, quick question. Roughly, how much of that property will not be used in percentages?
Percentage is maybe, probably ten.
Ten percent won't be used?
Yeah, probably. I'm just looking at trying, half of the east side, or half of this. But the south end is next to landfill. And even maybe, quarter of that could be buffer. So maybe we're in ten percent. Of course, retention basis, it'll be open space or retention basis, so maybe we're.
Do you keep these single, uh, yes, single level order?
Then your proposal is let's for, let's do it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Oliver. Anyone else? Mister Chairman.
This might be directed to you, uh, Josh, but to the extent the master plan was being developed, the master plan that was adopted, uh, was there any discussion, research, or anything like that to the extent uh, the zoning and the future land use, zoning was taking effect with the landfill in proximity?
That's correct, uh, the previous master plan, and we've got this as single-family, uh, zoning for the master plan. Uh, lands, excuse me, single-family land uses, master plan. Uh, we did change that, uh, based on a couple of factors, the fact that next door is multi-family already being developed. Uh, and the fact that they do have the landfill, uh, to try to keep some of those units away from the landfill. It would be more viable for development, uh, to keep those units, you know, multi-family, but keep them away. So, in order to make it viable, we thought that it was to be multi-family.
If you know, has there been any type of recent remediation or anything below the surface? Like that landfill's been there a long time. It had a past history, going back to my first time I served here in the township. A long time ago, and I'm just curious if there's any other activity and any type of environmental concerns, um, where each state might be going to the north, south, or the west?
Yeah, if you go out there, there's a lot of monitoring wells all over on the site, as well as on adjacent sites. I, I think, if I'm not mistaken, even the property that, that the township is in the process of selling in twenty-four Foss, which is across the road, even has some monitoring well there. Uh, so, it, it is being monitored. Uh, I don't know that the property next door is currently being developed. I'm sure they had to go, uh, through the state regulations, which I'm sure required a lot of testing. I know one of the, the kind of hot button, uh, topics now is PFOS, and I know they changed their standards for that. Uh, and that actually did affect the site in some areas, so certainly they're going to have to get some testing now, you know, and get through the state level.
So when Mister Dean and Carrier comes in for a site plan, then they'll have to go vet any other adjacent property owner to any extent, any of those things are still coming with a site plan for development?
Well, they could come in with the site plan, but I think the engineering phase, uh, is where they're going to be required to do a lot of that testing. Alright, thank you.
Just, just a little follow-up. The question is for the public and whoever wants to listen. There, Ben, and I think it was the late nineties, there was quite a intense leachate collection. It was litigated, and throughout the litigation, that was formed in the leachate, uh, collects in various spots. It goes through a central building, gets, uh, they apply, whatever they apply to it, then goes in the storm. So there was quite a bit of work on holding that leachate there. So it is being collected, and it's, uh, to my knowledge, I haven't heard of any downstream, uh, leachate getting out. It seems like that collection system is doing what it was supposed to do when it was designed back in the late nineties. So, this has been.
Which would continue to be important going forward for the public health, safety, welfare like that. I mean, it's been, like you said, Charlie, it's been a, a long time. That's an issue that's still, you know, I'm sure the development will have.
Sure, because then you're, and then residents that, that buy that property should have to know on their deeds that there's a landfill next to it, obviously, I mean. Generally, that works that way. Just so, there's nobody gets surprised after they buy a house or condo, whatever they're buying. But there, there was quite an intense, uh, project there. Lot of money spent, and it, uh, seems like it's working, if you don't hear much more about it, so.
They revised that system, uh, in, in the late two thousand ten, like two thousand five or two thousand ten. Because they had some issues that it was not, company wasn't being geared up since that time, it, it's actually been substantially improved.
Have you watched, uh, any?
It was not great, you know, in, in like two, two thousand, two thousand six, they were not doing their job. They made a lot of improvements, but they took.
Thanks. If I could make an observation, uh, I've lived in that area now for almost thirty years. I drive for a fossil lot. I used to see tankers, even the landfill. Don't think I see a tanker in ten years. So they would collect the, the leachate and ship it out and take it to a treatment facility. I don't, I don't think they have to do that anymore. Okay.
Anyone else?
It's all leached out. And it's, it's, just adding that, it's been kept quite a bit. There was quite a bit of material put on top, so the water runs off and the city going down into the debris and then leaching out through soil. But so there's, they've been said, there was a lot of improvement to that. It's, uh, it's not even designed like a new one is today. But it does work, it's collecting enough leachate. That's it.
Okay. Anyone else? Alright, well, then at six forty-five, I'd like to open it to the public, the first rezoning request of the night. Any person wishing to speak will be recognized and will be able to ask, uh, will be asked to give their name and address before speaking. We have said all speakers limit their comments to four minutes. Once the public portion is closed, we will not recognize any further discussion or comments about the community. Any of your comments will be, all, they, all your comments will be gathered, and our planner, Mister Box, will answer them at the end. So, so anyone who would like to come up and speak?
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion to open.
Oh, and may I make a motion to open this? Uh, hold on, sir, don't, oh, yeah, I know, I still. So, motion, hi, Mister Spatafora, seconded by Mister Oliver, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passed, so, go ahead.
Hello, folks. Uh, my name's Ed Cress, I live at five one, five one six Silver Bell Drive, just right down the street from the area you were talking about. Um, you're going to see me a few times, because we're going to touch on twenty-three in card, but this point, we'll put this out there. That was considered the EPA super site. If you don't know what that is, you better start Googling it. And that means, for the federal government, because I'm law enforcement, I, I deal with them. That means that the ground was so contaminated, this township and this state couldn't afford to fix it. From the AIDS, people had cancer, and I did my research when I moved in from Tosh, and I knew that was an EPA super site. There's little white pipes, fat methane, so there is no explosion. I'm just saying. I appreciate you and your concern, sir, regarding the health and welfare, because I know if I moved into a place and it is not stated, you live next to a former EPA super site. I don't want to get into that. That's just food for thought on that. I'll leave it up to you guys to look at.
Alright. Did you state your name and address? I don't know if I heard.
Yeah, 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 sure.
Okay, do it again, fine, will we?
Yeah, I live right down the street.
Down the street, yeah. Okay. Anyone else? Do anyone else? One wants, Mister Piper, anything? Alright, then at six forty-seven, I need a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Mister Oliver, seconded by Mister Spatafora, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Mister Box, did you have any comments or?
Um, well, I was not around in the eighties to, uh, to be aware or not if this was at the EPA super fund site. Uh, but again, this is a rezoning, this is not, there's no, we're not proposing to build anywhere now, just rezone the property. There are stages in the development process, specifically when they go to the engineering phase, where those type of concerns will be addressed. And if, if it is in fact a very dangerous site, then they would not be allowed to build on it.
Okay. Alright. Anyone who would like to make the motion, recommend rezoning? Anyone?
There's no further discussion, uh, Mister Chairman. Uh, I will move to, uh, recommend rezoning from residential, one-family urban R one to residential, multi-family low-density R twelve for, uh, proposed Golden Creek based on the, um, recommendation and the, of, of our planning department. And based on, you know, our zone ordinance, it's more for the purposes of why we're here for, for this agenda item today.
Motion by Mister Spatafora, supported by Mrs. Smith. Mister Chuckfield, would you please call them all?
Yes, Mister Chairman, Mister Spatafora, yes.
Yes.
Mister Hardy?
Yes.
Mister Oliver?
Yes.
Mister Chuckfield, yes.
Okay, we have, we've been managed both. And again, this is just to rezone the property. Petitioners got lots of hoops to go through before they can actually do it, and so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, rezoning request from agricultural AG to residential, one-family urban R one, and agricultural AG Schaefer Development, urban parcel, zero eight, one four, three zero zero, zero zero six. Located on the northeast corner of twenty-three mile road in Carr. Section fourteen, Schaefer Development, petitioner. So, would you please state your name and address for us, please?
My name is Nick Ballverman, I'm with Schaefer Development. And my address is twenty-nine eight hundred Middle Belt Road, Farmington Hills, Michigan, four eight three three four.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll now go to Mister Box, and then we'll come back to you.
Thank you, as you, Chairman and Commission. If possible, I'd actually like to talk about items B and C together. I know they're two separate agenda items, uh, it's the same developer, same family that owns the property. Uh, so, if that's okay, I'm going to go through kind of both of those.
Right now, it's letters B and B and C, they're both rezonings.
Okay. So, I'll go through the separate, but I, I am going to touch on both of them. So, a, as you mentioned, this is at the corner of twenty-three in Carr. Many people in the township are familiar with the old Nick, uh, family, uh, farm shop there, lots of vegetables and fruit sold there. Uh, so, the family is, uh, looking to split off a portion of the property they see there in yellow, uh, and, and have that rezoned to R one. That does match, uh, the master plan, uh, to do that. Residential uses are, are very prominent in this area of the township. Um, but the, the hard corner that they're keeping, uh, agriculture currently, uh, we do have that portion master planned as commercial, so at some point in the future, uh, it is possible that they could come in and have that portion rezoned to commercial, uh, in the area. Uh, the north of this property is the township water and sewer department. To the east, the land is currently vacant, uh, but a residential development, uh, has, has been on the books with the township for a few years now. Uh, I believe there's still an engineering phase at this point. And again, so, what you see here is the master plan, uh, commercial, and single-family, so they are, are matching that, uh, keeping, uh, the R one is what they're going to parcel off, that split has not officially taken place yet, but they're in the process of that. Uh, which is why they're here to get that rezoned to R one. Uh, the remaining piece they are seeking to keep as AG at this time. Being that it does match the master plan, staff is recommending approval for this rezoning. The other item, I'm going to see, which again is, is just up the road, a car road. They're also a little family, uh, they are looking to get that site rezoned from AG to R one. Uh, and it's the same developer, I'm sure Mister Ballverman will speak to it as well. Uh, with the intent to have a single-family residential development there. The residence to the west, or the, the property to the west is single-family. Uh, residential to the south, uh, is, is residence as well as the township, uh, water and sewer department. Uh, and to the north, it is property that is currently owned by the township. Again, this, this area is master planned for residential, has been for many, many years, uh, and, and it does match what they're seeking, so. That being said, staff is also recommending approval of this rezoning request.
So you're talking about both, B and?
Correct.
Okay. Sir, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I'd simply indicate that, um, you know, we're expecting a, um, an upscale, uh, for sale community there. The plan, uh, the rezoning is consistent with the master plan. Uh, we will certainly work with the township, what we always do, uh, through the engineering and site planning process, and we think that it's going to be a lovely addition to the community.
Questions, and then B or C?
I got a question. Petition. So each one's going to have its own identity?
Right.
Spatafora.
Just wondering, Mister Ballverman, Ballverman, good evening, was there perhaps ever any discussion or entertainment to purchase the eastern portion of the water and sewer property from the township? I'm curious, or is the township, the entire parcel?
I'm not aware of that, no. Anybody was seeking that?
Only in the sense of both master plans for R one, and, you know, I can see a connection if township were to solid, you got one big community. But I think you, uh, Mister Oliver's question was answered, looks like you're going to have just two separate developments with separate, uh, communities.
That's correct, that's correct, okay, thank you. Just maybe a quick answer to that. I think the township needs, wants to keep that expansion possible.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mister Chairman.
Good job, dude.
Uh, Mister Box, just a verification, are, are we expecting a lot split happening before this goes before the board?
Um, no, uh, they're, they have applied for a lot of split, and they want to confirm that it does get rezoned, uh, before we finalize. So I think that this would be conditioned, any recommendation and approval of it, or would be conditioned on the lots of that.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Commissioners, anything else? Alright, and I need a motion at six fifty-five to open it to the public. I'm thinking I do B first.
Yes.
Then we do C?
Yes.
Okay. So, and this is for the rezoning request from agricultural to residential, one-family urban R one and agricultural AG Schaefer Development, urban parcel, zero eight, one four, three zero zero, zero zero six. So the south end? Yeah, correct. Okay, so if anybody would like, and then would need the motion first?
So, go ahead.
Motion by Mister Oliver, seconded by Mrs. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passed, so if there's anyone who would like to speak, you heard Mister Field before, so, come on.
Sorry, folks, this is when I actually came here, hold on. Okay, thank you, Edman Cress, five one five one six Silver Bell, thank you. Put the slide back out, you'll see where my house is at, right across from the water department. Um, we move, this thing, I want to stop something. I'm just a resident, I pay attention, I'm independent, I watch what everyone does. You have a great job, right? We moved here ten years ago, plus, because we liked the country atmosphere. My whole thing right now is strictly this. How far are we going to take it? How, how much land are we just going to suck up, put some divisions in, towards no farm land left? Your infrastructure is already taxed, I'm also the president of the Castamare Home Association, right across the street. My street, and, excuse, you know, I thought the same, has been beat the shit. From the trucks that fixed twenty-three, it would come down the streets, struck the lines four times to where my residents could not get in the neighborhood. Got that fixed, right? But the roads are horrible. It was not like that ten years ago. They're crap, because all these heavy trucks were working their way around and things like that. Now, let's talk about infrastructure. I'm not opposed to this, uh, the option, uh, sign, whatever they want to sell, that's great. I'm not here to stop that, it's their property. I'm just here to say that, as a resident, you guys just crammed, and I, I'm not blaming anyone, I'm just saying, a, a new development at twenty-one Carr. If you're from the township, do you know how shitty that traffic is? And I got a teenage driver, so I, I, I worry about that. If it's hard for me, an extremely experienced driver, to pull a lot of that damn progress at that rush hour, you just put a development right across the street that's going to make it worse. That's all, these are, these things I'm just pointing out. Take some things in consideration, I don't want to stifle, I know we want to grow our township, we want to do this. We love the atmosphere here, but, one, we want to turn this into a trend. Because I grew up there, one house caught on fire, the rest caught, because they were all five feet away from each other. I don't want to see that happen here, I don't want to see every piece of farmland sucked up. But, again, it's, they're probably, they can do what they want, I'm just saying. That's the charm of this place. You can just drive right on a block and you're a country cat in the spirit, and that's appealing. We, we cannot lose that as a township, that's what makes it a township, otherwise it's just changing the city. Because that's where it would be, if we keep on taxing the shit. Car road is beat the shit. When is that going to get replaced? Twenty-two mile car, from Carr to Hyatt, severely beat the shit. All this development, nothing's getting done, hopefully the tax dollars are coming from, you know, the federal government, and we're moving on next. Like I said, I read from, I see what you guys are doing. And it's great, it's all good and wonderful, I love it, but I just want to come, be my wife, damn, man. And, 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 and again, I'm not here to oppose, you know. Motion ends, we, we love that farm. I love local business, you know what I mean? I support local farmer, we're all bummed that they're doing it, because it's nice to see the wildlife and things like that. Now, what gets taken into consideration with that, is you've got wild turkeys, uh, that roam that place, I mean, obviously the deer. Uh, we don't want to see them being pushed more into the road, would cause more, uh, traffic issues. And, 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 and that's another thing, I mean, let's look into the traffic, and I can't wait till twenty-three's finished, it's going to be phenomenal. You guys are putting a park off a donated land, off a two-lane squiggly highway, where you can't even, how's that going to work? You're going to knock down the Waldenberg building and everything else to, what I mean? Thank you, appreciate it. But, I'm just saying, I was hoping the park was going to be a festival. I mean, that's kind of a nice place to play, right? But I appreciate your time, I appreciate everyone, sorry to rant and rattle, but I just, you know, pay attention to these things, and I thought you guys should know what some of your residents and the associations think. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Who would like to talk on B?
Get that up there, Mister Box.
I promise you, you do.
Okay. Okay, anyone? And I will go ahead and ask for a motion at seven o'clock, to close the public hearing. Motion. Motion by Mister Oliver, supported by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And public hearing is closed. Do we have any other discussion? Mr. Box, do you have anything you wanted to share?
Nothing. So, okay. Just to be clear, we got to make sure that it's conditional, first one on this lot split.
Correct.
What was the, Mr. Trump, the first rezoning must be conditional on lot split?
Yes, if your recommendation is for approval, it must be conditioned on the lot split taking place.
Okay.
Anybody like to make a motion? Anyone?
Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I'm making a motion on Permanent Parcel 0814300006. This will be a recommendation to the Board of Trustees to rezone the portion drawn on as the northeast. Portion of the property from agricultural to residential, R1 contingent upon a lot split happening to facilitate that shape being a rezon. And this will be based upon consistency with the master plan and recommendations from all appropriate departments.
Okay.
I will second that.
And supported by Mr. Spatterfor, who's through Tuckfield, which please call.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tuckfield votes yes, Mr. Spatterfor.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes. Okay, motion passes. We're moving on to public hearing for C. We have a motion at 7:02. Motion by Mrs. Smith.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Tuckfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And this is for the rezoning request from AG to residential, one family urban.
In other words, the top.
Site there. If there's anyone that would like to speak, please come up. Anyone?
A diddle to this one.
Just diddle, I like that. Diddle work. Okay, anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, then at 7:03, I need a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Mr. Oliver. Supported by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody close? Okay, motion passes. Do we have a recommendation for C?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion for Permanent Parcel 0814300008. And that would be to recommend to the Board of Trustees that they approve the transfer from AG to R1. This is based upon the sub-entwah change meeting up with the master plan and approval from all appropriate departments.
Okay.
Second.
And Mr. Spatterfor has seconded that. And he's called for approval, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tuckfield votes yes, Mr. Spatterfor, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. And again, these are rezoning requests, they haven't even put anything in the ground yet. All right, the next one would be special land use, Tri-County Golf Court. Golf carts, corporate, permanent parcel 0818454001. Located on the north side of 23 mile road, a half a mile east of Hayes. Section 18, Joseph Sorrento, Sorrentino, I'm sorry, Mr. Sorrentino petition. You state your name and address, please.
Joe Sorrentino, 51073 Malano, a common township.
Okay. And then we'll go to Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. The property in question, Mr. Sorrentino's Tri-County Golf Carts. Is just on the 23 on Malano Drive, you know, the car wash there on the corner, there's a building just behind that. As you can see in the picture, they are the end unit in that building. And so what he is looking for in terms of the special land use is outdoor display for his golf carts. There's a number of categories to qualify for the special land use, I can run through those, I know you've seen them all many times, but. It is appropriate, an appropriate use in the area so long as the front yard setback variance is obtained. So they will be in front of the ZVA on Thursday looking for a variance. Typically, this outdoor storage or outdoor sales displays wouldn't be allowed in the front yard, that's what they're seeking. And part of that being, there really is nowhere else. We allow commercial businesses in there, but there's nowhere else for them to display them if we do allow that. So they're seeking to put it in the front yard. It's not likely to contribute to any more hazardous conditions that are in the area. It's not anticipated that any nuisances would be created as a result of this. We would like them to confirm their hours of operation, when they would put those out there. You know, from what time in the morning to what time in the evening. I'm assuming they're not going to leave them there overnight. They might be gone by the next morning if they did that. The use is not expected to interfere with or disperse development on adjacent land, it's very built out in that area anyways. And it's a similar type of use to everything else in the building that is residing in currently. It does relate normally to with the area, again, and it's a built out industrial area with some commercial businesses like this in the same building. It will be available for public use, developed access, and it will have no impact from a zoning perspective. You know, maybe a side or rear location might be more corporate, but in this instance, there really is no side or rear location for them to put that at. And as proposed and anticipated, it would be detrimental or injurious to the area or those in the area. Again, so long as the front yard setback variance is obtained at the ZVA on Thursday. So staff doesn't really object to this. Again, if approval is granted, it should be conditioned upon the attainment of the front yard setback variance.
Okay.
Basically.
Chairman, I did have a question for Mr. Box. So, Mr. Box, typically when we have a special land use, maybe it will look clear, is this special land use for outdoor sales display? Is that what it would decorate?
Yeah.
And it would distinguish itself? So the special land use is just for outdoor sales display, although they are anticipating for it in the front yard. And then the location being allowed in the front yard, but then being the province of other variants was approved, is that accurate? Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Anyone else?
Question, petition.
Mr. Oliver.
How many units you going to have out there?
Actually fluctuates, we usually have about three to five units, I use about 400 square feet. I'm heading the south side over there, we rock that area. It's not really a display, I don't have the visibility like you would think. I would much rather park in front of the west side and get the visibility for 23 mile. But when we service these vehicles, we have a small little facility in back as well, about 400 square feet. So we service vehicles, people bring them in, we have nowhere to put these. We've been doing it for nine years over here. For some odd reason, something happened, maybe somebody complained, which I don't know what happened, but that's why we need that new, excuse me, that's why we need that area.
So you're talking two, three vehicles?
Anywhere about 400 square feet, so each vehicle you figure six by nine, 54 about 50, 60 square feet, five eight about 300 square feet, we're using.
You and some now there?
Pardon me?
Prior to tonight, you've already been selling out there?
Eight years. And it's really the people took them in, they take them for a ride around the streets and stuff, and they bring it back, and we deliver them.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have, I have a question, I apologize, and I don't want to be the flying ointment, but this is a condominium. So my question is, if this is a common element in a condominium. How does this petitioner have standing to request to put the golf cart in a common area? Do we have a permission, do we have a letter?
He doesn't have an affidavit of ownership from the owner.
Okay, and then it does say that they, they agree with the.
Correct.
Request, okay. Because I didn't see that on the, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I had a petition, and I think you mentioned this, Mr. Oliver, but I was reading something and I caught the tail on it. Can you, can you just explain to you, so are you parking out there as extra parking so that potential customers can drive them? Is it visibility, what's the purpose of the vehicle?
So basically, like I said, we service them, so we have nowhere to put them. So we bring them out in that area. Or we can park them on the west side in a parking spot. So we utilize both areas.
So.
So I do that and park them out there because we're servicing the area. We're servicing carts that are brought in from customers that need service.
So when you refer to service, what you're saying is that it would be difficult for you to park them in the building?
I would have.
Because you don't have space.
Correct.
So it's parking in there or parking in the existing parking spots?
Correct. I have no room, we'll have three to four carts sometimes in that little area inside. We service some vehicles, some big our operation hours between nine and five. But we would never leave anything outside, never. There's not storage.
But you store them inside during the day because they're not actually going to work, or in the evenings, you're not actually working.
That is correct.
Correct, thank you, Mr. Trump.
So these golf carts are not for sale, is that correct?
They are for sale, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, so is there a map? You're selling them or you're fixing them?
We have a service department, we have a rental department, we rent them as well, and we also sell them.
Okay, so the ones that you want to put out front are the ones you're selling or the ones that need to be fixed?
Them are actually ones that are have to be fixed and the ones we sell. And there's about anywhere between three and five out there, that's it, from hours of like nine to five.
And these are all new carts, correct?
The ones that we sell are, the majority of 90% of them are new, some are used, correct? But like I said, three to five carts.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Sorrentino, would you continue or, yes, would you continue maybe to store any of your carts or display any of your carts? On the storefront which faces the south, or is it just exclusively facing Malano Drive?
We could put some on the south, the problem, we rent, we're very much bad, we rent carts out. We have a 24 foot trailer that we actually keep behind the facility. That nobody care, they, we all do that, a bunch of the tenants over there do that, they have trailers. So that trailer takes up that space, I cannot put them on that side. They can only go on the south side and the east side.
And if I could interject at this respect, or if you see the picture there behind you. The south side is the entrance really to the.
Correct.
Store. The store, the only thing that's there is the drive aisle and the sidewalk. If they were displayed on the south side, they would be blocking the sidewalk, which would be an issue.
So about 25, 30 foot store pharmacy you have there, if that?
Yeah, you probably have, yeah.
That faces the south where you're going, got three doors?
Correct, but when the one facing the south and doors, if you look where that blue on it is and that green Tri-County sign right there. You have, I'd be very limited on parking spots. So now that actually, prior to this meeting, we couldn't park them there any longer, so it's been very difficult to operate. So we've been utilizing our parking spaces, now our customers can't park there. So I'm parking on the street, my vehicle, my partner's parking over. A friend's building, and it's just been a pain because we're using our parking spots.
Will any of the golf carts at the end of the business stage, when you put them back inside? Will there be any movement of those golf carts on Malano Drive? Because during rush hour back and forth, that street gets kind of hectic.
Oh, I agree 100%. Yeah, no, exactly, you just go right, right down the rocks right there and you pull in the back. That's it.
Off of Malano Drive?
No, you come right in off the rocks. These things are lifted and everything, they come right down, right off the rocks.
So I'm going to go right here.
Right there, and then you can turn around the corner and pull them in.
It doesn't go out into the room?
No, no.
And so maybe I didn't state it clearly, I think you just answered it, so you're just going to, you're allowed.
That's it.
Put them in the back.
That is correct.
Your, your entrance in the back, right?
That is correct. There's nothing that's left outside except, you know, I don't know if it's visible here, on the glasses. You may see a trailer in back, actually, see another, that would be the north side. That's where that long trailer is, we've had no parking anywhere.
Anyone else? All right, this, I would need a motion to open it to the public at 7:15. So, Mr. Spatterfor, the motion. Supported by Mrs. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, if anybody would like to talk or to speak on the special land use for Tri-County Golf Carts, please come up. Send your name and address for us.
Hi, Chair, I'm Marie Kowalski, I am actually the president of the association, Malano. Malano Bus, under association. I agree with you about being a flying ointment. Mr. Sorrentino has occupied that little space of gravel now for a couple of years. But this affidavit that you speak of, I have not seen it. And again, I mean, we've dealt with each other a couple of times, we've guessed. I have not personally seen this affidavit that you speak of.
You know, Marie told me, correct?
Yeah.
That's my name, or they don't make you that. You have a couple of years.
Okay.
Yeah, well, you have a couple of years, yes. But the thing is, that is the association's property, which I help maintain. So I'm just curious as to why it wasn't brought to the association's attention first, before coming to the township? So that we could kind of clear this up prior to. So that's, I mean, and I'm on behalf of a couple of members, owners of the unit.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Box, I just, I looked in the packet, I don't see an affidavit of ownership in here, agreed, I looked as well. They did send one, and I apologize, it was down your packet. I don't have it right here in front of me either. But they do have one, and it sounds like if I'm hearing correctly, this is the owner of the unit. Not necessarily owner of the building itself.
And again, this is just from a legal perspective, on behalf of the township. I don't see how we have standing to grant these special names or any variance, unless the association signs off on it. That's the issue, because if that's a common element. What happens is, is all the units pay for the maintenance and the right to have that for the benefit of all owners. So I, as the council for the township, respectfully, I don't know how we have standing to grant this unless the association has signed off on it. And I'm not trying to be difficult, but being honest.
I would agree.
It's not his property, it's the association.
It was our assumption that that affidavit of ownership was from the owner of the building, not the owner of the unit.
Mr. Chair, if I might, maybe we should take a stand.
Hold on, is there anyone else who would like to speak? We still have the public portion. Okay, this time I'm going to go ahead and close the public portion, 7:18 to the motion. Motion by Mr. Oliver. Seconded by Mr. or Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Mrs. Smith, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I recommend that they, you should take a stand, so all parties are able to review prior to what we have.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we need to understand really who owns and controls this area. And then we have the appropriate permission to utilize it from, if it's an association, common element, we learn from the association that's permitted. That's just the bottom line. So the answer is no, which is both of them. So you know.
I got one question.
Go ahead, sir.
So basically, I have to get, like, what do I have to do here?
Well, I mean, this is not, technically not your property. It's a property of all the unit owners. So it's, it's a, it's a vegetation bed that everyone supposedly pays to maintain, like, like the parking lot and everything like that. So I don't know what your, what the bylaws or the master deed says as to that area. I don't know what the, what the plan is, that hasn't been presented to us. But we need a presentation and information as to who controls this area. If it's the association and it's a common element, then the association has to sign the affidavit of ownership or some sort of permission for you to do that. Because essentially what you're doing is coming to the association and asking permission to park in an area that you don't know. You contribute to it, you're a member of it, but your rights are no greater than anyone else in a condominium. Unfortunately, even though you're right adjacent to there, and I see what you're trying to do, you're trying to elevate your business, and I respect that. I'm just telling you, as a township's attorney, I can't advise this planning commission to consider a special land use of this piece of property. That we don't, that we don't have proof, 100% proof that you own and control.
Okay.
Okay?
So basically, if I get the tenants to sign a petition, if they agree, then we could actually go through this again.
Well, you have to look, look, I can't give you legal advice, but your master deed and bylaws have a process as to vote and approve for certain things. So that's an internal issue in your association.
Okay, got it.
So what we're doing here, you need to talk to the, nice young lady.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
I just, I want to address, I want to address this. Is what he's doing out, is it, it's not proper, it's in violation of our ordinance.
Parking them out there currently isn't.
Parking them on there currently is a violation of your, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to, I'm gonna state it on record.
Okay, that's why, and, and as you stated, he's been doing this for a while, it came to our attention, uh, it, it was brought to, to the planning department, uh, so we've been working with him to navigate this, this process, he's trying to get it in compliance, is what he's trying to do. Okay, so he can continue parking there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments from commission? Hey, don't I think we have a motion for it? Well, yeah, so I've asked Mrs. Smith to make that motion.
Mr. Chair, I want to make a motion to postpone this matter.
Okay, so, motion to postpone special land use for tri-county golf carts by Mrs. Smith. I'll second that, Mr. Trump, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Miss Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Trumpfield, yes, Mr. Stepford?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next item is, uh, special land use, Orange Theory, permanent parcel zero eight three two four zero 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 one nine, located on the north side of Hall Road at mile west of Romeo Plank, section thirty-two, Cindy Ramirez, Scum Services petitioner, is petitioner in the audience?
They do have a representative here, Cindy is not, was not able to attend.
Okay, so there's no petitioner for you?
They, they do have a representative if we have questions.
Okay, where, where is that person? Come up to the podium, and we'll start with you, Mr. Box, give you a chance to get your
Sure. Uh, so as you mentioned, the property is on the north side of Hall Road, um, west of Romeo Plank, uh, they're looking for a special land use for Orange Theory located in an existing commercial building. And I'll let the, the petitioner describe it here in a minute, but my understanding is it's essentially a, uh, exercise, um, facility. They run by classes, not, it's not a, anyone can come in at any time, membership type situation, they have classes scheduled, so they, they can control how many students are there and how many instructors are there, uh, and, and it's a fitness, uh, station-based fitness routine. So much like the last special land use, going through the same criteria, it is compatible, it's a commercial business with the other businesses in the plaza. Uh, the applicant was asked to provide, uh, information regarding hours of operation, they have since done that, that was in your packet. Uh, and, and having that, Steph feels more comfortable that they, they will not have a negative impact on traffic or parking in the plaza. No nuisances are, are anticipated, this is an indoor business. The use, uh, has no effect on the buildings or structures, again, it's an indoor, uh, classroom type, uh, operation. It will operate and really harmoniously with the, the other businesses in the building. The building is available and the, the business is available for public use, has no impact on, uh, health or safety. And as proposed, uh, it's not anticipated to be detrimental or injurious to the area. Um, and that makes sense, Steph is recommending approval of this special land use.
Okay, sir, would you please state your name and address for me?
Yeah, Ethan Thomas Lee, uh, three one five zero zero Northwestern Highway, Farmington Hills, four eight three three four.
Okay, do you have anything you'd like to add, Mr. Thomas Lee?
Uh, no, I think Josh set a perfect end with the general contractor that builds a lot of these in the area. Um, except, and everything Josh said, it's all membership-based, uh, signup-based, it's all, uh, staff-led, uh, there's no just dropping in and working out, uh, it's capped with a certain number of participants every class.
Commissioners? Any?
Yeah, yes, just the owners of service.
Yeah, it is, uh, Monday through Thursday, five AM, seven PM. Uh, usually classes between five AM and about ten, and then they take a break, so it's not real busy from ten to about three, and then classes resume from three to seven o'clock usually. Uh, Fridays, it's five AM to five thirty, and then Saturday and Sunday, it's seven AM to noon.
Until three?
Sorry?
Until three?
Uh, Saturday and Sunday, it's seven AM to noon.
Okay.
And Mr. Boxer, would be no change to the current, uh, side yard setback landscaping of the residential community to the west of Ronan Drive, is that correct?
Correct, there, there's no, no changes to the exterior of the building whatsoever.
Correct. Thank you.
And it's always done to, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Thank you. Any special events which would bring in a lot of people, not giving them anything?
Uh, no, I, I personally work out there and I've been to these, it's, they, if you look at the, I haven't seen the plans or part of these, but they're usually thirteen stations per location, so it's a max usually around twenty-five-ish people working out at a time.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, possibly from the general contractor here, uh, does this facility have a rear entry?
Uh, yes.
Do you know if, if there's a, a specific entry that's gonna be the primary? Just fade in front of the rear, is it in front?
Yep.
Mountain County will be here, uh, particularly with the evening time traffic, uh, the rear parking lot of this plaza stays empty, the front stays very full, it's gonna be a pretty full parking lot in that afternoon or evening area. They obviously have enough, uh, have enough, uh, space here, but I would recommend pushing people to the back, the vice of front, it's very, very busy. You know, with Comcast being there, Five Guys, uh, stayed pretty decent, I've been there. Unfortunately, found the Five Guys.
Yeah, we're taking the space that was the Xmas store.
That was Comcast, right, and that one actually worked relatively well because of the traffic, it's incidental, but sure, I can see that this one might be a little bit busy in front, people. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Trumpfield, anyone else? All right, and I need a motion to open it to the public at seven twenty-eight, so, motion by Mr. Spann for a second, everybody, Mrs. Smith, all in favor?
Aye aye.
Anybody opposed? No, okay, so if you'd like to come up at seven twenty-eight and speak on Orange Theory, you may do that now.
Uh, Truberrick, four five two seven four Roman Drive, um, I'm probably about nine, four more houses down from where that is. The indication of rear entrance, how would that take place? Would that be adjacent to the cutting out from the, uh, the Bubbles thirty-three next to that? You say rear entrance, where does that take place?
Uh, the rear entrance to our suite, so the suite we're on is, uh, far left of this photo here, uh, the rear entrance is directly at the back of the suite.
All right, so it's a, it's a, it's an ingress, egress to the building, not, not a road?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, I was getting nervous about putting a road in someplace where the headlights are gonna go directly into the house, I was speaking more on behalf of five or six houses that are right back with it.
Yeah, we won't be touching anything.
Really, I'm sorry, it's five o'clock in the morning, uh, typically these establishments play a lot of music, and what you don't want to hear is this bass one, boom, 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 if you're one of those five or six houses.
Yeah, correct.
I will tell you that was true, we can hear the music from Partridge Creek across the road at eight o'clock at night, and, and we're, and that's a half mile away, I, you know.
Yeah, so these, uh, we perform, we have engineers come in and do sound studies, all the walls are properly insulated, you know, any exterior walls are usually double drag wall insulated, so we, we're very cognizant of that issue.
Okay, that's, that's, because I have, just people are, the first five or six houses, that area was developed, it used to be nothing but getting back to the old, where earlier, that used to be all woods, all the way down from there, all the way through the, uh, the Bubbles thirty-three, which is brands, Edad's here and then like that, so I'm getting off on a tangent. It's a good thing it's primary property, but we, you know, down my soapbox, we need to be aware of having parks and wrapping, keeping nature, it's nice to have deer and fox and stuff going, you know, crush your backyard, so just, you know, let's try to keep agriculture, but keep the parks and keep it bringing, but anyway, oh, sorry, um, that's all I have to add, thank you.
Okay, anyone else would like to speak? And at seven thirty, I need a motion to close the public hearing, so, motion by Mr. Spann for a supported by Mrs. Smith, all in favor?
Aye aye.
Anybody opposed? Public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion on the special land use for Orange Theory?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion for special land use for Orange Theory for conventional number zero eight three two four zero 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 one nine located north side of Hall Road, that contest, section thirty-two.
And I'll support that. Mr. Trump, please call the law.
Yes, Chairman, Miss Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Stepford?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Trumpfield, yes?
An unanimous vote of yes, so, well.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is, uh, site condominium subdivision plan, Beck Heritage Farms, permanent parcel zero eight, zero seven, one, zero, 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 one, seven, and zero eight, zero seven, three, zero, 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 one, seven. Located on the east side of Hayes Road, midway between twenty-four and twenty-five mile road, section seven, Towering Oaks Investments petitioner, hi, how are you?
Good evening.
Hold on for a minute, and we're going to Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission, uh, as you mentioned, this is along Hayes Road, south of twenty-five mile, just south of Beck Elementary School. Uh, these two parcels are, are owned, uh, currently, uh, I think, by the original family in Farmington, uh, and they're working with a developer to build a single-family subdivision on this property. It, it is, I believe, a hundred and eighteen units, and tended to be done in three phases. Uh, the, the neighborhood directly to the east has a couple of stub streets, they will stub into those streets, uh, as well as to the, the neighborhood that's to the south, they will stub that stubbed street that exists, they will connect into that as well, uh, and they will have access out to, uh, Hayes Road. Uh, all lots do meet the minimum size with the depth ratio, and they do have multiple points of connection to the neighboring communities. Uh, they do have the three detention ponds that are proposed, uh, that will serve the different phases. And they do have the dedicated landscape area along Hayes Road that's required by ordinance. The site entry sign features proposed is located within the landscape area outside the corner, next, uh, it does meet the setback standards. Uh, and at this time, they have no more outstanding items that they submitted, I know two or three times, and we only get a few comments and they've revised those, and at this time, we are recommending approval.
Okay, petitioner, name and address for it?
Yes, certainly, I'm Pete Snyder from Riverland Consultants, eight eight zero zero twenty-three mile road, Shelby Township, Michigan, forty-three one six, representing Towering Oaks Investments LLC, I'm the civil engineer, uh, for the project. Uh, I really have very little to add, we've been working, uh, actually, one point of clarification, the Towering Oaks Investments has actually purchased the property, they are the owners now, uh, as I understand. Um, and, uh, again, we've been through the rezoning, changed the property lines to fit the phase lines, uh, that split is, has already occurred and is shown and updated here. And right now, we're just at the final stage of working through some, uh, basically working through the issues with two drains, two county drains which cut diagonally across the, in the acre to the south, and uh, simply called the Howard in the north of the section in phases two and three, which you wouldn't even know it was a county drain because it looks a lot like a very small drainage. So, with that, I am certainly available for any questions you may have.
Okay, and we will open it to commissioners, Mr. Spann for it.
Hello, Mr. Snyder, uh, refresh my recollection from the past, even if it was brought up, I don't recall, but you know, this is gonna be a site condominium development, and aside from the limited common element area for each homeowner, is there any general common elements aside from the intersections off of Hayes Road or the detention ponds perhaps in other areas?
Yeah, so the, the, and the unit, the unit plan, of course, is attached as part of the, uh, as part of the application, so the county drains are, I mean, the, uh, the detention ponds are general common element, you also have the landscape buffer along Hayes Road, uh, which is a, which is a general common element. There's also a little corner up, uh, in extreme northeast where some stuff runs through there, actually sidewalks that, that go from the, the Boney Bayberry subdivision up to Beck Elementary School. Um, that little corner is being preserved, it's all under, uh, some sort of an easement, there's a the original conveyance of the property had, had that rectangle really residing with the school, so except for, except for getting in there to do, to connect a storm sewer that's required, uh, that area is really gonna remain the same as you see it right now.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Chairman, Mr. Snyder, uh, also, I was curious about the portion, looks like might become an area into the south of thirty-five, thirty-five and thirty-four, and then also to the south of sixty-two, is that access for the, um, for the corridor, or what is, what is that for?
Um, well, there's two things, really, that's access to get back to the detention pond because engineering requirements require an actual pave, right, you know, paved access back there, and that's a convenient place to put it. That's also where the storm sewer outlet from the detention pond will go over and connect to what used to be the Howard drain over to the east, which is, which is actually over the consumer's energy quarter. So those are just, basically, they're, they're general common elements, uh, for, mostly for storm sewer and access to the detention ponds.
They, they, so there's a drive that seems to come off of Harper's Drive, right where there's, there's a corner there, are you expecting the portions that are matched to drive uh, to be ground level, are you expecting them to be, to be, uh, could be towed from a, from a layman's perspective that it's connected to a drain?
Um, yeah, they're gonna look, they're gonna be grass with landscape blankets, they're gonna, it's not gonna, I, I guess, a pocket park would be the best description I have. Okay, it's not, not, no amenities, but a little bit.
Right, and I'm, I'm, yeah, maybe an unimproved backup or something, so I'll make sure of that, okay, very good, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just to follow, must be annually maintained or weekly or be maintained at all?
The, the open spaces?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they're gonna have to be weekly, and so you can, it's the moment of grass, you're gonna have to take care of it, yeah. The condominium, again, this is a sub-condominium, they'll be a kind of association over, they'll control all of that. Same ways you, is there gonna have demands to, to maintain the landscaping buff for Long Hayes, it should probably be the same folks.
Thank you.
Do, do you have an idea when you start building?
Well, the client's already instructed me to begin with engineering, so, just as soon as we can. Uh, and with phase one in particular, which is from Howard Drive south, uh, if you can, Josh, I don't know if you can click back, there will be the, on, on the big screen, that will be, phase one is the portion on the right, the Eckerd drain, and then the, uh, half-mile collector road is Howard Drive, I mean, basically, there, there's a phase line, so everything right with that line, Mr. Box is online, but just as, I think they would love to do underground this winter and be ready to base it sometime next year.
Um, Mr. Box had mentioned that you read there were some connecting roads to other subdivisions, but during the construction phase, will there be a construction entrance? Instead of, you know, debilitating our roads even further?
Yeah, yeah, and the short answer is yes, there will be a construction access road, uh, probably just north of the Eckerd drain, clip in the corner of phase two, coming to the back, and that will probably be maintained through all three phases. The idea is to, to build on the right connector on the face two is actually the section, which is at the top of your screen, providing the gas ports, sort of working their way out from the back, so the access, so they're not driving on brand new roads with, with all the construction equipment and house stuff.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Anyone? All right, at this time, I'd like to have a motion to open it to the public at seven forty. So, motion by Mr. Spann for a, seconded in by Mrs. Smith, all in favor?
Aye aye.
Motion passes. Anybody in the audience that would like to speak, come on up. Please state your name and address, and you have four minutes.
Good evening, my name is Scott Baden, I live at five four one zero seven Eagle Drive, which our backyard, the consumer easement is in our backyard, um, and it looks like we're gonna be kind of right on the border of like phase two and phase three. My, my comment is really to the petitioner, um, that field right now has been completely unmaintained, unmaintained. I got weeds up to my waist, uh, I have allergies, I have to sit in the basement to get any sort of relief. Uh, we wanna be good neighbors, and so I hope you wanna be a good neighbor as well. And so during the construction and all this, we have And so during the construction and all this, we have a number of families with young kids with that backyard, all back to that. So please take that into consideration. Please keep that property maintained right now. Please help us, my neighbor who is also here, he mows his grass with a mask, a mask on because of how bad it is currently right now. That's, that's all I got to say tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to speak?
Michael Kraft, five, four, zero, two, nine, Ego Drive. Just a concern, with this new development, what is the township, the county going to do about Hayes Road? I mean, it's been a disaster for at least fifteen years, from twenty-three mile to twenty-five mile. From twenty-five north to twenty-six was redone with that bridge with that electric part. What about maintaining the roads that have been treacherous the last twenty years or any more and more development? What about the roads? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else? Oh, okay. All right, at this time, I'd like to close the public portion at seven forty-two with a motion.
So.
By Mr. Spence for him. Motion by Mrs., or seconded by Mrs. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, Mr. Box, do you have any comments, especially the Hayes Road?
Yeah, that's really the only comment I have is the Hayes Road. And we're, as the township, we don't own the roads, the county owns the roads. They just sent us a bill for half of it. So we don't have a whole lot to say in what they do and when they do it. I know the Shelby, folks at Shelby Township have been concerned with Hayes Road as well, as well as the staff here. At this time, I'm not aware of any road projects on Hayes Road in the next couple of years, but it is certainly on everyone's radar.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, do you have anything else? All right. Then I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the site condominium subdivision plan, Beck Heritage Farms, permanent parcel zero eight, zero seven, one, zero, 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 one, seven, and zero eight, zero seven, three, zero, 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 one, seven. Motion by myself and supported by Mr. Tuckfield. Mr. Tuckfield, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield wills, yes. Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Spence for him.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, we're moving on to zoning ordinance amendment, public hearing. Proposed amendment involves Article four, section ten point zero four, zero four, A, four. Site limitations, I think that's what it is. Article five, section ten point zero five, zero four, A. Site limitations, Article six, section ten point zero six, zero four, A. Site limitations, Article seven, section ten point zero seven, zero four, A, one, D. And ten point zero seven, zero four, A, two, D. And ten point zero seven, zero four, A, three, D. Site limitations. Purpose of the text amendments is to meet the state Michigan legislative requirements allowing maximum lot deaths to a width, width ratio of four to one. Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. So I'm sure Mr. Tuckfield is aware, as, as he's on ZPA, one of the most common variance requests we get is, is to have a variance to, that would violate the ordinance of the three to one ratio. So right now, township ordinance requires that all properties less than ten acres for all zoning categories be not more than three times longer than the arrow wide. The state of Michigan minimum requirement is four to one. So we are, as a township, allowed to be a little bit more strict. But we're finding again and again that it's really not practical. A lot of property are, it can be difficult to develop accordingly. So as we are in the process, as you all know, of rewriting the entire ordinance, this is something that we're, we're going to change most likely in all zoning categories. But tonight, we are looking simply at the residential categories. We've had a number of residents who have pending variance requests that, that were tabled until the ordinance is updated and being, as long as it takes to update the entire ordinance, we wanted to get this one in front of you this evening. Another thing I can touch on is that, as you mentioned, in fact, here I put it on the screen, and I usually have this in your packet as well. So all of these different sections, these are the lower density residential sections that we're suggesting that we, we change the ordinance now, even though we're going to eventually change the entire ordinance. You see how many times it's listed in there? This is only about four or five zoning categories. Every single zoning category has this requirement. Moving forward, we're going to change this process to not specifically state the ratio, but to reference one location. So if we decide in the future that we want to change this to something else, you only change it once, not in every single category. So tonight, we're, we're seeking a recommendation to take to the board. The board will also, if you guys recommend approval, the board will also have to consider a revised code ordinance that also requires three to one in order to make this applicable, so that's it.
Good, thank you. Miss you, anything? Um, Chairman, I just have one question, Mr. Box. Well, actually, kind of a question, as, as you say, we've seen this. Size maybe pools was probably the most common variance I've seen. It's usually hard to rationalize the restriction. So I'm glad, I'm glad we're addressing it. Choosing four to one, is that because it was state, state head? Was there any other thought that we should choose that? Is there a reason, like that we're changing it? Should we go bigger, like what was the thought until choose?
So the, we're allowed to be more restrictive, which we were the three to one, but not less. Not less restrictions, so four to one is the maximum we can go. So anything else we could, you know, for example, could have said three and a half or something like that. Uh, but we felt that it was most appropriate to just align with the state requirement so there's no confusion.
Very good, thank you, thank you, Mr. Box, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anyone else? All right, at this time, I'd like to open it to the public with a motion, seven forty-eight. Motion by Mr. Spence for him, seconded by Mrs. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance? Please come on up to the podium, anyone? Okay, seven forty-nine, at seven fifty, I'd like to close the public portion with a motion.
So.
Motion by Mr. Spence for him.
For him.
Supported by Mrs. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just a question, they should have asked this before, but for any, for any pending zone warning, so ZBA variance request prior to this ordinance or this provision being active, are these going to be tabled or until the ordinance is enacted or?
So the ones that have been requested prior to this have gone to ZBA and have either been approved or denied. There were a couple of folks who chose to withdraw their request for fear that it was going to get denied until the ordinance is changed. So if someone did have, say, a three and a half to one ratio and they were seeking a variance previously and it got denied, they would now be allowed to create those lots.
Thank you.
Mr. Spence for him. Chair, if I could, I don't know the numbers, but we have definitely denied these in the past. And it's, like I say, it's annoying if not deny them, but there's some where it's easier to see rationale for those small variances that we deny because, well, it's what we have to, but very rarely, we actually want to. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anybody who'd like to make a motion?
Actually, I did have one more question. So this would be a recommendation on the proposed amendment to board trustees?
Correct.
Chairman, if there was no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to recommend the proposed amendment, as stated in our agenda, to the board of trustees for approval.
Okay, motion by Mr. Tuckfield, supported by Mr. Oliver. Please call the vote.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tuckfield wills, yes. Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Spence for him.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay. On to public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on non-agenda items? If there are, please come up to the podium, state your name and address and mention non-agenda items.
Good evening again, Scott Baden, five, four, one, zero, seven, Ego Drive. My comment is just kind of the overall, kind of touching on, I know what has been on a lot of residents' minds and if you've heard that a couple of times here tonight. And this might have been a better time, probably to come during the master planning hearings and before that was revised. But it seems to me that there lacks just a lot of synergy between the county, the township, Shelby Township, Utica, whatnot, that as all this development is going on, we all want, you know, there's, there's progress. You can't stop progress and I understand that. But when we're looking at like the mine that's being built at twenty-four mile and Hayes and the subdivisions that are being built and we have all this construction at twenty-four mile, you know, different times of the day, it's backed all the way up from Hayes to Romeo Plank and you don't move. And, and there, last I knew, there was no plan in the next ten years for the county to do anything for twenty-four mile or for Hayes. So it becomes a great contention, I think, for us as residents, is what's going on with the, the continued development that is not slowing down. And what I also don't want to see is a lot of products starting to kind of stop. And just looking at mortgage rates from a year ago in May with the latest data, right? Two point nine six, two point nine six points in May of last year to five point two three this year. But then, so an increase of over two and a quarter. We've got that inflation that's going crazy, housing prices going crazy. I live in, my neighborhood is a twenty-five, twenty-six-year-old homes. I just had a house sold down the street from me for four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. That's great. But as we start these other developments and the prices keep going higher and mortgages keep going higher, we start these developments. And then when it crashes like it did fifteen years ago, then we're going to have half developed areas and that's going to look terrible for, for our township. And so we can't stop progress. I just hope that we can be a little bit more selective of what's going on or maybe try and slow down progress a little bit until there can be some synergy and different things that are taken into consideration with the county and how are we going to keep up with the expansion with the roads and water and electricity and all that. And that's, that's where I'm coming from. It's just a concern as a citizen here and conscious. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else?
But Ron's non-agenda.
I appreciate your time. Mr. Box, are you the one who plans all this?
No, you got to hear talk into the board.
Oh, oh, okay, I didn't know what Mr. Fox said. Just touching, again, this is non-agenda stuff, just please take into consideration, you guys have all been fantastic. I, I said, I pay attention to what's going on and that's what you want from your, your citizens and your townspeople to be engaged. Mr. Oliver, are you affiliated with the Oliver South Park? I got stuck in the company. But please take into consideration some of the things we're talking about. I know we can't stop that progress, but we need to find that balance. And there is balance, don't let the greed or the tax dollars come into play. Because I don't want to see what happened, you know, we were here when that, when housing market took it down. And some of those developers didn't want to fulfill their obligations. My subdivision, we got light poles that are just fiberglass poles. Because the developer, from what I found on this President Association, did not come in and put those poles in. The ones that are nice cast iron like every other neighborhood should have, and they pay for the assessment and all that kind of stuff. Can we focus, is, is there, is there room, any plans? Do you guys know for expansion of car robbery, anything like that? Because we're putting more development, I, I back up to it. So it's, it's, it's damn near, it's a drag fest out there. Every, everyone over a fast car lets you know it's fast. So I'm just concerned about that, is, are these things we're taking into consideration on that? But I, but I appreciate your time, thank you, my first time being here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else who would like to speak? Anyone? Okay. Then let's move on to Commissioner comments. Anyone?
Everybody think they'd like to share tonight? Mr. Spence for him.
Yes, I, I know the roads issue has been going on for many, many years. And I would say for the past almost, probably at least thirty years or so, as this township has grown in population and development with many, many residents who were lifelong Macomb County residents shifting from perhaps the south end of Macomb County to the northern end. Roads, you know, have been an issue previously with the road commission in Macomb County and now it's run by the Macomb County Department of Roads. Hayes Road is a major thoroughfare. We have a lot of things going on there. We also, that's a road that is shared with another neighboring community throughout our entire stretch, that would be Shelby Township. I know the township has projects scheduled, perhaps with agreement with the county. I guess, Charlie, I'll ask you, sir, if you know if there's any way that Macomb Township and our administrators, you know, perhaps in partnership with Shelby Township, talk and communicate with Macomb County Department of Roads, maybe to shift, I don't know about shifting priorities. Maybe we cannot do that because current slated scheduled road projects are on major thoroughfares. But Hayes Road is a major thoroughfare. With this development that is scheduled to go in, I totally agree with our residents as, as a resident myself who lives near that area. That's, that's a battle that now can only get, or this is a discussion that has just been repeated and ongoing properly for the last twenty years. You can perhaps take it even back thirty years or so. I appreciate, I think it was Mr. Kraft in the audience who brought that up again. Thank you for that fresh reminder, if you will, the fresh word in due season, but that, that's something, gosh, I would like to see, you know, this township, who perhaps, I don't know if they were neglected over the years or whatnot, as the population shift from primarily an agricultural to more of a, a balanced, well-planned-out community with residential, agriculture, recreational, commercial and industrial, to balance that all up. We've said it. I'd like to see if there's something where we can actually put pen and paper pony up to the extent that both communities, Shelby and Macomb, with the county department of roads, perhaps in their budget somewhere and even in some reserves, do something that is so widely important really to the public health, safety and welfare of residents in this, not only this township, which we're primarily concerned with, but really most of northern Macomb County, which is only shifting and will continue to grow for the foreseeable future. Those are my comments.
And just to follow up on that. We do have a lot of meetings, Justin, he's been involved in it. But ever since I've been on the board, starting eighty-eight, this township has always been there for their side of the check, their portion of the money. We've never, ever slowed down a project, stopped a project, or tried to get a detour. We always welcome any that development. We're, Ben knows, he works with that a lot of times in the county. That is a slow-moving wheel, it really is. It does, it does get done, but it's slow. But in the meantime, all this, these houses, they don't stop being built. So it's a tough situation.
I just, yeah, I gave you the road expansions for the county. And I've had multiple conversations with their supervisor. I know that's a priority for him to get a solution for Hayes. And he's been having discussions with Shelby and the county for that. But, you know, it comes down to money a lot of times and we're, we are a donor county, which means that we pay out more than we give back for Act fifty-one money, which is the money that goes to, to. And we're, we are a donor county, which means that we pay out more than we get back for Act Fifty-One money, which is the money that goes to, to pay the roads. So it, it's definitely the queue, they're definitely trying to find funding sources, I know that they were trying to get um, money recently, through recent infrastructure money to prioritize it, it didn't happen, but, um, you know, keep trying, and it'll, it'll get expanded, it always does. Unfortunately, the, the way that it works is a lot of times the progress happens first with the development, and then the road gets picked after. Um, but, you know, just, I've been doing the road gaming expansions in this county since two thousand. We've had Shager, most of Shager done with that, Man Night done with that, we're doing North Avenue, I mean, and, and remind everybody that Garfield's gonna be connected between twenty-two and twenty-five. The, the first leg is gonna be between twenty-four and twenty-five, and that's gonna be done next year, so that'll help alleviate some of that congestion because of course cars done by the Hayes and, and Romeo Clank, and then we can, that Garfield can take some of that out, so it, it, it'll happen, just. Unfortunately, it takes time.
It'll move.
Yeah, it, it moves, it, it's gonna happen, but it, it, it will happen.
And even our county officials have said the same thing, how roads are funded when you talk about Act Fifty-One. Now we're talking our state legislature involved with that, I mean, these are, it's been going on for several, several.
Hayes needs to be expanded between twenty-three and twenty-five, everyone knows, and they're working to, to find a solution.
Okay. Mr. Tuckfield?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add to that, this is just, uh, maybe a little different context, obviously, Mr. Spadafora has a lot of history of the township going back years, uh, Mr. Loyas, uh, does a lot of this, Charlie's obviously been around for a lot of these. Uh, my experience is that we're, working within the township as an appointee in under multiple administrations and observing the interaction between the administration, the county, and states. And one thing I would say, um, I, you know, I've been appointed by multiple administrations, I don't owe one more than the other, I'm a resident like everybody else. This administration seems to have considerably better relations with state and county than anybody that I've seen in the past ten years. And I don't know that that can be properly summed up, and how valuable it is in making sure that we're not hurting ourselves when we come to the table. You know, I remember years ago, in one particular situation, I asked somebody, I was like, this really needs to be done, everybody knows it needs to be done, why isn't it gonna get done? The answer was that somebody in the county didn't like someone at the township, it wasn't getting done because of it, it's unfortunate, it's unfortunate, it's part of it. Um, but it is, and I think, uh, you know, it's, it's a value that we have, uh, with the current administration that, um, probably isn't always realized. I think another thing that's a value is that, uh, Mr. Box has an extraordinarily strong background in, in roads and understanding that what they mean, um, all, all of those things. So, um, I drive on the same roads too, I, I'm at twenty-one in Hyatt Morangue, I, I wait my turn in line every morning and every evening, I, I certainly feel a bit frustration. And it is a chicken and egg problem, but I, again, my, my perspective is we are a much better scenario for that than we were four years ago, eight years ago, ten years ago. It'll make it better when you're saving traffic, only that I know that we're doing as good as it can be in that speed in that, in that regard at that point. So I have, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good, good. Anybody else? All right, then let's move on to Macomb Township Board of Trustees, latest update, Mr. Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Ernie. Couple things, like always, we, uh, hired two more utility workers than wanted to. Uh, they were, they were coming off, like I say, on the street, but they were new hires, so that's gonna be nice, and we have a partner now who's fully staffed, which is good, we've been working on for last year, trying to get staff, right now it's fully staffed. Um, we hired an accounting clerk for this department, so that'll be good, it'll help that. And, um, the grant writer, Mrs. Rowe, was awarded another year contract. And, uh, just for numbers, uh, we paid her roughly three thousand a month on a retainer for grants. And so far, uh, in one year, she's produced seventy thousand dollars for the grants. So then, then again, it's another slow wheel, but it, it is moving forward, so there's a lot of let's say there's a lot of nice grants coming up the road, but they are very complicated, time-consuming, so. And that's about it.
It's just about everything is allocated in the time.
It's, yeah.
Okay. ZPA latest, Mr. Chair, Tuckfield?
Uh, Mr. Chair, the only thing I mentioned is we have a, uh, agenda for Thursday, um, and we have other things on it, so we will, uh, we'll go on that, I think the ZPA, and we have one of the other ZPA members in the audience, I think will, uh, very much appreciate the change, uh, assuming the board of trustees approves it, on the, uh, width-to-depth ratio, I think it's something that's needed to be changed for a long time, we're gonna see a change, so I have.
Mr. Box, planning department?
Uh, just one item, I, I wanted to point out, uh, our next scheduled meeting, two weeks from tonight, uh, we will not, uh, not be having we have no agenda items, we will not be having meetings, so our next time we meet will be the first scheduled meeting in August.
Is that the one where we're gonna be next door?
The one that's canceled is the one we were going to have next door. Partially why this agenda was so large and, uh, a couple of items were willing to be pushed back. So that we didn't have to worry about logistics of being in the other building.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Motion by Mr. Oliver, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Then at eight oh seven, we are adjourned to the, thank you, everyone.